Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners meeting for August 22nd, 2022. Public participation is offered by webinar. You can join the webinar by going to, there's a link on the MVDwater.org website for tonight's agenda. And there's a link on there that you can click on to access the meeting through Zoom, or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter the webinar ID 85911937557. As a courtesy, Merrimack TV is also recording this meeting, and they will post it on their website at a later date. So at this time, I will call everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, liberty, justice for all. So I'll call the meeting to order at 5:05. You've got the full board here. We get the three commissioners here. And we got John Lyons participating remotely. John, can you stay where you're from? Where you're calling in from?
I'm calling in from my residence at 25 Windsor.
Great. And Ken Ayers is actually excused from tonight's meeting. So we got Paul McLaughlin, Wolf Von Sean, and myself, Don Proventure. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is a public hearing number two regarding a proposed rate increase. So I think we're going to entertain a motion to recess the meeting. Do we need to do that?
So moved.
Second. All right. So all those in favor of recessing the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
John, how do you vote?
Aye.
Great, thanks. Okay, so the purpose of the second hearing for the rate increase is for the rate increase. So at this time, I declare the second public hearing relative to the Merrimack Village District proposed rate increase for fiscal year 2022-2023 open for comments. The public hearing notice was posted on the Merrimack Village District website at www.mvdwater.org, at the town hall, Merrimack Town Hall, and at the public library and post office. Purpose of the hearing is to allow comments from the public in relation to the proposed rate increase. When all comments have been received, I'll close the public hearing. The board will return to the regular session to complete remaining agenda items. Anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none. So at this time, I'll take comments regarding the proposed rate increase. Keith, are you prepared to discuss any of this at all? Just, you know?
I can't. I would just restate the same things I spoke before, if you'd like. Spoke to you before, if you'd like, but I'll leave it up to you.
You could. I think just for the record, you know, it's the second hearing, and having it on record would be a good idea.
Okay, well, I'll give you just a quick synopsis for the record, but we're looking at the July 13 letter we wrote to you, talking about the adjustments that are on the table right now, and they really all revolve around meeting your budget needs, but most importantly, supporting the capital projects for the PFAS facility. That's the bulk of it. The proposed, the recommended rate adjustment that you'll be voting on is an 11% increase to all, both the fixed and consumption charges. That's on target with what was identified back in 2000, when we embarked on these capital projects. Because ultimately, we see another 12% to, or so, 9, 10, 11, 12% or so that's going to be needed to capture what was originally identified for the long-term rate increases to support all the projects. So the purpose of this one is to get you to the one step closer to what we see as the final adjustment. With this one at 11%, and what we think the targeted amount will be next time, next year, it's really on target, pretty darn close to what was thought to be the final rate adjustment. So it's not inconsistent with what was voted on, or at least what was disclosed when the capital projects were voted on. And why we're doing it in steps, 11% now, and then a final one next year is because that gives us one more year to get the final costs in, just to see if it could be a little less, or if it needs to be a little bit more. But you're voting on 11% increase, and it's the second to last step that would be needed to capture the rate adjustments for the capital project. So that's it in a nutshell. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sure.
And I think it needs to be restated that this increase is a result of the warrant article, articles that the town voted on three years ago, right?
2019.
2019, yeah. 2019, and also really a result of the New Hampshire, the new New Hampshire maximum contaminant levels that really didn't leave us a choice anyway in the end after the warrant articles have been voted through.
Yeah, as well as just overall cost increases on the budget chemicals. A lot of things are higher than they were back when the initial rates were projected. So we have to kind of account for all that as well. I don't see any-
And our projections, just to put some numbers, or some numbers to that. Back in 2018, when this was voted on, we estimated an overall rate increase of 79%. You've done a lot of those rates adjustments along the way. With this 11% and what we think will be needed next year, we're right there. So we're targeting about 80%. So instead of it being 79, we think it'll land at about 80. So yes, Wolf and Don, this is really just another step in what was already planned and presented back when these capital projects were voted.
Right. Any other questions?
We have a member?
Yeah, we don't have any present members of the public, but there's one participant on Zoom, so I'm not sure if that person wants to ask any questions at this time. It's like the name is Ben Niles?
Yes, I'd just like to add the perspective that I think that what you're doing is reasonable, and aside from being reasonable, it's very necessary. We have to deal with the PFOA issues we have in our water supply. And I think Merrimack Village District has done an excellent job over the years versus, say, the state average. So I'm happy to see that we're moving forward with implementation of necessary steps to improve the water quality. The one thing that I would like, and this is jumping ahead, but in terms of the future standards, when it comes to your regular session, could you talk about the EPA advisory of 2022, where they're looking to move the minimum reporting level from four parts per trillion to a health advisory level of four parts per quadrillion, which is like a thousand-fold increase? And is that scientifically feasible? And, you know, what's our approach to it? Now, I don't necessarily think you'll have all those answers today, but obviously, what I'm pointing out is that the EPA is looking to really tighten the PFAS or PFOA standards phenomenally if they implement in 2023 their 2022 health advisory. So I just want to put that in the table for any comment that would be available today, and if not, that it can be looked at and discussed in future meetings, be it a month from now, three months from now, or whatever. Okay?
Yep, sure. We're well aware of that. We've, you know, we've all read the health advisory. It's significantly lower. You can't even measure that level.
Right.
You know, we're certainly aware of all of those things. And yeah, we can, we can talk about that in the regular session.
Okay.
Sounds like you're well, well versed and aware of it as well. So we appreciate that.
Well, thank you. It's an important matter for our town, including the people that are on well waters that may need to hook up to the village district to achieve the safe levels, because they certainly can't do it on their own.
Right. And that's actually on the agenda as well today. So hopefully you'll stick around and listen in if you have the time.
Sure, be happy to.
Great.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, I don't see any further comments on the public hearing for the rate increase. I don't see any press in the room or on the Zoom chat, so. Seeing no further questions, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The Board of Commissioners will now reopen the session of the Merrimack Village District Board of Commissioners meeting. So I guess we could entertain a motion to go back into the regular session, if that's warranted.
Moved.
Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Paul. All those in favor of going back into regular session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
John from a remote.
Aye.
Thanks. Okay. So we're back in regular session, and the first thing on the agenda is
Do we vote on that as well? To accept the rate increase, if that's what the point is.
Oh.
Is that due today? Okay.
Okay. So I guess we can just do that then now.
Sure.
So we'll entertain a vote for the rate increase of 11% across the board, and that's going to be effective September? The end of September? When was the plan on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, originally it's in September. And that's what the analysis was based on.
Yes, that means you got to do a town-wide reading at
Absolutely.
the end of this month, or September 1st, somewhere around there. All right, so I guess the motion, if someone wants to make it, is to accept the 11% rate increase across the board, basically. But here, a do I hear a motion on that?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Paul, second by Wolf. All those in favor? Any comments? No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. John, you vote? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's 400. All right, so now we can get into the credit card policy, which is the first item on the agenda. And this is the first reading. And Michelle Holton, the Finance Director, and Resource Finance Director is here to talk about that, I believe.
Do we want to full read?
No. Do you want to read it all?
It's part of the package, so it's public information, so I don't think we have to read it.
All right. Yeah, there you go.
That's a good idea.
What we've done is documented the actual practices that we have been following with any credit card or charge accounts that we have on behalf of the district. Initially, when I came on five years ago, we had several local store, Home Depot, Tractor Supply, some charge accounts, O'Reilly, Napa. And then we found the need, that sometimes we have something we need to obtain. The only way to get it, sometimes for the best price, would be online. And if we aren't able to set up a relationship for billing, determine that it would be beneficial for us to have a credit card. So we did obtain that a few years ago. Currently, the bank credit card holders are just myself, Ron as superintendent, and Jill as the business manager. My card holds a higher value, but we keep that secure. Sometimes there's a need for purchases after hours, so Ron and Jill do carry their cards with them. And the practice that we put in place for the card is that as soon as we're doing a charge, we basically review it with one of the other cardholders, and we'll both sign off on the documentation. So we're just both reviewing what we're purchasing and sort of nature as to why we're using the credit card. As I said, it could be emergencies. Sometimes it's just that it's impractical to follow the usual purchase order process and be built. So I've been pretty good with working out the routine the last few years. We've constantly been adding controls for the charge accounts. Staff usually turn in all receipts within a day. They turn them right over. The operations manager, and sometimes they will, but it design me as one of the foremen to review the charges, but we ask that it be clear what was purchased, what, if not obvious, the nature, the business nature of the charge. And those are turned in on a regular basis. Every couple of days, the operations manager comes in, reviews it with our accounts payable area. And as soon as we get these statements, we match everything up. And everyone's been very good about just following through on that. And we've actually, for some of our other accounts, do monitor what balances. We have actually limits we have available, and when we found that we really didn't need that much of a limit, we've actually lowered it, although one of them keeps putting it back up. But, you know, we try and keep it to what we need, but not to have any excess. So that's what we've, we've put in place. We've just documented exactly how, how we go through our process of using the cards. I also detailed out things such as personal charges are never allowed on the card. Anything that would have access to cash has never been set up that way, but we would never have anything that has a cash advance option, or any kind of ATM option. Purchasing money orders, cashier's checks, et cetera, all strictly prohibited. So we outlined those types of things. If anyone ever does have an issue with turning in receipts, we've said to start, we could take away your privileges. But if we ever find any misuse, we have made it clear to everyone, and we also have a sign up that we're going to have everyone be doing, stating that they have read the entire policy and all the procedures, and that they agree to them. And, you know, if they do not follow them, they could lose their privileges. And if there's ever any kind of theft, criminal activity, anything like that, we reserve the right to, you know, fully pursue that, all that's available to us. So we're going to be reviewing this with all the individuals to get sign ups. The statements each month are given to board as part of our accounts payable manifest, and that's something that we always include, the full backup with each AP check run. And we make notes on all the receipts that support the statement, and also anytime, which is very rare that we would have a lost receipt. People do just fully document what happened, why they don't have it, and what the nature of the charges were on sign off, but that's very rare. So are there any questions on any particulars?
What, do you have any questions?
I have one or two, not surprisingly. So the IRS doesn't require, for example, receipts for meals less than $20. Like if, you know, anybody's like, for example, traveling for work or something to a training or something, whatnot. I would probably suggest that we want to not follow that practice and still require receipts.
I guess I would like to.
Right. Because there's a tendency to do, you know, $5 here, $7 there, and nobody can really say anything, because the IRS doesn't require the receipt. And if we follow the IRS policy, which a lot of businesses do, it can be a little bit of loophole that gets, that sees abuse. So I would probably suggest not doing that, right? The other question was, would be, if I were to look now, how old is seen non-reconciled? The oldest non-reconciled, unreconciled charge on any of those cards that you currently have?
That we currently have? As soon as we have the bank statements in there, immediately reconciled, so.
So there's no outstanding reconciliations now?
No, every single statement, all of the charge accounts that I mentioned, and the bank statements, they're actually in the check run that you'll be seeing tomorrow. So we have the latest TD Bank is our primary bank, and is where our bank cards are issued from.
Right.
Those are reconciled immediately. Very rare that we've had some odd charges. We had very nominal $15 charges that weren't ours, that we had to research, but we followed through to make sure that those are eventually credited to our account. But we've been very fortunate that we haven't had any issues. Everyone's very good about getting their dual signatures, turning in the receipts, making notes. We've gotten into a good cycle with it, and we reconcile. Kristen actually puts in, as she gets from AP, Kristen, as she gets the TD Bank charges, she puts them actually into our system daily as she gets them. And then, when she gets the statement, she'll just show reconciliations, make sure that everything offsets properly.
Okay, great.
And I review that as well, as well as Ron, before that even comes to you.
Okay, and just a quick form, question of like format. Most large organizations have like Concur, or Expendit, or something like that, right? And like an expense reporting app, where, or, you know, accounts where the employee has to basically enter information and then categorize and substantiate what the expense is for. I'm assuming we're not doing that, because there will be additional licensing costs, right? So the employee here just basically staples the expense on a piece of paper and
Yeah, just write on whatever documentation they have.
Right.
Printout documentation, or write the GL number. You know, the department that it needs to go to. And as I said, if it's not clear what the item is, or what its use would be, then I ask everyone, just give a context to it. Describe it if the layperson were to pick up the receipt, could they understand what it is, and what we would use it for?
Okay. So right now, there's no plans to go with like, there's probably not enough transactions, right?
No.
There's no plans to go with like expense reporting.
I would say we probably had a dozen transactions on this last day.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, sure.
So you said there was the same number of employees are going to maintain the credit cards, and not adding more employees than we already have?
No, the bank credit card, just the three of us that I noted, hold bank cards. The field staff do have cards for Home Depot, for Tractor Supply. Currently, O'Reilly's and Napa just allow us to, they have their.
To store account.
Yeah.
They would say, throw it in Merrimack Village District's charge.
Right.
And it's on that, they list the truck number that they're actually purchasing. It's wiper blades, or something like that. They'll actually list it, that'll be 45.
Okay. All right. And what approximate credit limits are you kind of looking at here? Just for ballpark?
Oh, sure. Right now, the Home Depot charge is at $2,250, and that's shared among all the field techs. Tractor Supply is at $4,000, but we're going to be bringing that down. I had it reduced at one point, but because we, we can pay our bills on time, they often give us more credit. So, but I want to keep it down. I just looked over the last couple of years, the monthly charges that we totaled. So we'll make it ample, but just not have excess balance. And for the credit cards, Jill and Ron each hold $1,500. My card holds $10,000.
Okay. I know one feature that I added to my credit, my business card, is like a text feature, which works pretty good, because you kind of know if someone's using the card instead of waiting to get a statement to find out that someone's been using your card, if it's been compromised or something, something to look into if they offer that. It's very helpful to me, and it's a record of if I can look back and remember, you know, what I charged and when. So I'll be like literally, you know, at the cashier register, and as soon as it goes through, I'll get a text immediately. It's a good feature if they offer it, just to have that way. If all of a sudden you get a text and you're like, I didn't do that. You know something's going on, so. But no, that's all I had, so. Any other questions? All right.
Do we need to vote on this?
You can vote after the second reading, so it requires two weeks' process.
Okay. Yeah, there'll be a follow-up next meeting. And I just also wanted to say on the agenda here, just so for clarification, the, we usually have financial review that's done at the beginning of the meeting, but that is postponed this month due to the, an audit that's occurring.
Or doing, yes, we've been doing audit preparation. We have the whole year-end turnover, and then we're doing audit preparation. Our audit will be September 7th.
They were they were blocking. It was supposed to be.
That was coming through on the, yeah. Okay, good. So I guess that, that's that. We'll have the second reading next month, and we'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the agenda, we have updates from Underwood Engineers for our several ongoing projects. So Keith, feel free to jump in and bring us up to speed if you want.
All right, am I back, am I back up?
Yeah.
All right. Peter was, was going to give the update last week, but he had an appointment tonight, so he couldn't, he couldn't make it. He had told me that there's not a lot of new information, still few loose ends being worked out for the 7, 8 long-term maintenance warranty with the district's attorney. Wells 2 and 9 are still on track, as previously scheduled. And there is a swap out on Wells 4 and 5 scheduled. Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, for for the media in September.
That is correct. I actually need to get in touch with Jeremy with a vocal to help, to help us fill out the forms. Fill out to send those canisters, the canister in to get it lapped on, I guess, what's in the media before they burn it, I guess, or regen it.
So we're going to, we're not going to do the swing load? Is that how we're handling this? I can't remember how we go.
We're going to, well, it's been, we talked, regen is what we're
Yeah, so we're going to, we're going to empty the lead vessel.
Yeah.
Have that media reconstituted, and then brought back.
Correct.
So going to be functioning on one vessel while that's happening. All right. Do they have, like, anticipated timeframes on that? Is that, that's not something, it's all screwed up in the supply chain, like everything else is?
That was asked to get it during this meeting, and he said it was once the initial what are called the lab work and stuff's all done. That's usually only like a two or go with a three-week turnaround. I want to say two to three weeks, but it would have been three to four. But it was, it was relatively quick.
All right. And we should be good still working on the lead, the lag vessel on its own. Okay. Any questions on Wells 4 and 5? Nothing, nothing new on the warranty concerns we had over there, the premature breakthrough?
Still on the table. I don't know where it stands with, I know there was a meeting that I didn't attend, and so I'm a little bit of a loss, but but I do know that that was still on the table in the conversations.
Okay. All right. Move on to whichever one you want to do next. Wells 2, 3, 9?
Yeah, and again, 2 is on track. There's nothing, Peter told me briefly, there was really no new schedule changes. Yeah, and and again, um two is on track. There's nothing, Peter told me briefly, there was really no new schedule changes there. That's still, you know, targeting to be available to you this fall. And so there's not a lot of new or changes or differences from what we've been presenting previously. And well, seven and eight, um just jump into that one is uh Peter says really one of the only outstanding items there is still detailing the maintenance bond. And I think there's a couple of things that your attorney is still looking at to finalize that. But uh but I think that's the the only real significant loose end over there.
The uh, do you know if the pressure is still holding steady over there? I know there was a different.
Backwash again.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's that's still a an ongoing, I guess, issue.
Yeah, yeah. And you made a vocal aware of that?
Oh, yeah.
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 If we're required to do that. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he uh go ahead.
If I may, one thing we may want to touch on is the well two and three, uh three. Assuming we get the VFDs in, at least for well two, we have a shutdown plan for before Labor Day. It was the Monday before Labor Day. Can we call that key?
I can't reme- I don't know if I know the date. Ron.
Depending on demand, how do we, do we wanna, so if we're still.
Well, how are we doing now? I assume we're.
We've needed well to.
Yeah.
We are, we are um.
Using all of the Pennachuck connection too?
Yep, yep. I mean, we are satisfying, so it's not running all the time, but um it definitely goes up on the hot days.
Yeah.
But if we're without well two, I mean, you have the well three as a backup, but do we want to uh I don't know if we want to do any kind of water restrictions, outdoor restriction. I think it is the end of the season to keep it on track. We may not even have the VFD, so maybe it will.
Yeah, yeah.
But uh that's just kind of something I've been kind of keep.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing as well.
I don't wanna, I'd hate to if we have everything, put the work off because we don't need it, but uh you know, we need well two, but.
Well, I think we need it more now than we will later. So um I don't know, I'm kind of in favor of maybe putting off the shutting down well two if the VFD is.
Okay.
All you guys think.
I actually wanted to ask how we're doing because I drove through Massachusetts quite a bit the other day and I saw water bends left and right, left and right. Um and some pretty severe water fans. How how are we doing in that regard? Because that makes that question, right?
I mean, we have our normal restrictions in place and I assume like people are abiding by it, but we haven't really had the complaints out there that we've had the past of people watering on the wrong base. So we're doing okay. We'll watch our levels. Uh we did uh scale back for a little bit because the 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 water levels, but um all we're doing okay. I think we'll be.
Cool. But then I would agree, huh?
Yeah, I that's kind of what I wanted to ask you anyways. It's just, you know, with the drought, we're kind of on the borderline of extreme and I don't know what the one below that is, but it's, it looks like it came up and hit Nashua and the line was probably right, right at the
Yeah.
Nashua Merrimack border or something last I saw. But if we're, if the wells are still kind of holding up, obviously.
We, you know, we we do have those warning levels there and we're watching them and we're.
Okay.
You know. At some point, I think I'd like to have a kind of correlate with the uh divers inside of the wells, so that we kind of get a better reading of where that level is um associated with the the hot.
Sure. I don't know what your feelings are, Paul and John, about um you know, preference of, should we try to restrict irrigation and do the VFD connection in the end of the month or whenever the VFD comes in, or maybe wait till we have a little bit less demand in the system?
We'll wait.
Because again, I'm I'm looking at this and it's not, it doesn't seem like um we're we're, even if, even if we can't get the VFD installed until later than we want, we're not gonna need that much water at, in the future, October, November, December, like we need it now. So that's my only thought. So. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, John?
Uh the only thing I don't really understand is if it affects the rest of the project in any way, is it gonna hold something up if we wait? If there's no disadvantage to waiting, then wait.
I was, I was gonna speak to that too, and I don't know the schedules of the details, but I think the only caution would be we, if if it's gonna impact something to the contractor's sequin and cost, sequencing cost, we just want to be sensitive to that. I'd have to check into Peter with Peter and Joel to see if that's a factor, but I agree, John. I I don't want to cause a cost impact of two, or at least be aware if there's gonna be one before we make that decision.
Right. I would, I would caution against uh relying on the delivery day for that VFD.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we, I think we all know that, right?
So it may.
Very, very sudden delays.
It may be on them anyways, the delay, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I'd be a little worried about shutting down our main producer and uh
Yeah.
in a drought condition. It's
Oh, I, right.
That's, that's something to definitely be careful about, so.
I'm making some notes right now to make sure Peter and Joel over there get this message, so they're aware too, so.
Yeah, if the contractor, you know, doesn't think it's gonna cause problems on his end, it, you know, then let's, let's hold off, but if there's gonna be things we're not thinking about, then then the contractor's gonna have issues with it, then let us know, you know? But, all right.
Understood.
One issue is the impact on warranty, right? When does a warranty kick in substantial completion or?
Yeah.
Substantial completion.
But his warranty, his warranty with his suppliers kicks in earlier, so he might, he might. Yeah.
Well, we'll find out if there's any implications, one way or the other, cost warranty or anything that we think's of significance, we'll touch base. But the message is you gotta get water to the, your users, so delay when you can and if you can.
Right. Right, okay. Uh so if there's no further questions on that, uh the last thing in your item on the agenda was the uh
If.
Go ahead, you got.
I was, I wasn't sure first. So well nine, are we still talking about nine or am I, am I allowed to ask a question about one line? Okay. So in uh uh in the last meeting, we had talked about the permit from the S, right? And we had talked about how the letter in response to the permit application uh almost seemed as though DS is attempting to argue that MBD does not need additional water, right? And therefore, they do, they do not need to permit any more water, right? And we had in the last meeting discussed that we have to make sure that DS realizes that we have to go away from average rates when we look at these things, and we need to look at peak rates, right? And we had, and it doesn't say that in the meeting minutes here, what we had said, but I believe we had said that either Jamie from Emery and Garrett.
Yeah.
Or staff reaches out to DS and just brings that point home, right? Drives that point home. I wanted to make sure that has been done because that may affect our timeline with the permit.
And it will, I'm assuming it'll be done probably through the 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 uh, what do I want to call it? It's the uh gonna set up a plan anyways with the yes.
Yeah, Jamie was gonna respond to the comment letter we got from DS, which was requesting a um monitoring well plan. And I, I think if I remember what he said at the last meeting, is he was gonna respond and hopefully put those comments into his response.
It's actually drafted a letter because he called and asked about our pitch for this summer, well two, and he said he had to rework his whole response because he was.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Does Jill and Ron have a mic? Because it's not working if they do.
Is this better?
Yep.
Okay. Did you hear what was said or do we need to repeat it?
I did not hear what Jill said.
Just that uh Dan Tinkham from Underwood had contacted me, looking to find out what, where he had used, if we had used well two at all this summer. He felt we weren't using it at all. Um and he had drafted a response based on not using well two, so he just needed to rework that, so. And that was just Friday, Thursday or Friday of last week, so I know he's working on it.
Okay.
Can you hear that? Okay?
Yeah, it is soft and rusty. I just have to play with the volume buttons.
All right. That's gonna reach over there? Probably won't reach up. We got another microphone in here, but
I don't know if it's rolling on. I know there's some extra in there, but.
Okay, um so there's no further questions on, on those on our well projects, treatment projects? Then we can move on. It looks like you got an item on here for um the water rate model update, Keith?
Yeah. So this, just, just quickly, this has been something that's been on the recommended list for a while. It's been on the capital plan for a while, so there's nothing new here. Um but the, the reason um we're bringing it to you is, is we've got the scope ready to go. Um I think the question will be whether or not it's actually the, the funds available for it this year, but it has been on the capital plan ever since the original water system master plan was done ten years ago. And the reason it is, is the hydraulic model that's being used in the district is a schematized model. It's using the, the, the hydraulic modeling software. Um but it's only schematized, so it doesn't overlay or integrate with your GIS system. Um there's, it, it will be um a much improved model when it does that. And more importantly, it um, it will be a, the, the existing model served you well, but this one will allow us to do a lot more fine tuning, especially when we get into some of these larger developments that we've been working with um uh the developers, because the model will be probably even that much more accurate and that much more fine tuned. Um it will also begin the ability to start looking more at water age, which gives us tools to start looking more at water quality. It's um, it's really overdue. Um it's a twenty thousand dollar effort. It's, there's a lot of data migration that's involved and there is field work that's involved to do some cal, some updated calibration. And so we put a budget together for twenty thousand dollars. It's actually been that budget in the capital plan for a long time. Uh so I did give this to Ron recently, um just to, to keep the ball rolling. So he, he wanted me to give you a summary of what it is, um and then make some decisions on when to do it. So it's more a matter of um really, it's, it's simple. You have to do this. It's more a matter of when as opposed to if um just to keep things current and, and, and modern. And uh so the biggest advantage is that we're gonna now integrate with GIS and and be able to run extended time simulations.
Right. So that's the hydraulic model of the overall distribution system and storage tanks and everything, right?
Yep, yep.
And what the, what's the name of the program that you want to go with?
We're gonna be putting the, the water model in Water Gems.
Oh, yeah, I've heard of that. Okay.
And uh so that can integrate with your ArcGIS, so you know, when it, when it gets set up right, if you make system changes in GIS, it'll integrate seamlessly, update the water model too.
Oh, okay. Well, that sounds pretty useful.
It, it's much more useful. I mean, the other one's serving you, but this is, this is really getting us, you know, up, up to the today's standard.
Right. So um you said that that wasn't necessarily in the budget? Is there somewhere that we?
I, I didn't know for sure. I think Ron was looking into that, so I'm not sure where.
Look, I thought I budgeted. It's not in the budget. Um but it's been on the, it's been in the CIP. I mean, we could certainly, we do have other engineering this, you know, we could, we could do it. I guess my question to Keith would be we wouldn't be doing that. Would you be doing the legwork or the uh data collection, field data collection this time of year? Would you wait for probably next year to?
I ideally, I mean, I don't want to do it in your um in your high demand times. I won't do it now when it's hot, but I mean, it'd be nice to do it before winter, so we could do the modeling through the winter, uh Ron, so.
You're talking a fire flow test, right? Hydrant flow tests?
Yeah, to do some calibration work. Um and I don't, do you have a fall flushing schedule?
We do. It's been kind of up in the air depending on if we have the water or not, or where we're at with some of these. Yeah, for purchasing water like we've been doing, so it's, it's been kind of, we do need to do it, so.
Well, we would, you know, when possible, we would line it up with your flushing schedule, so the notifications are lined up, you know, at the same time. And you know, if water becomes a hardship, then you know, it can be delayed till spring. But ideally, if, if all things line up, it'd be nice to do it this fall.
We typically split our flushing into two phases. Our fall flushing is typically our high service and we concentrate on the regular pressures on in the spring.
Well, and then we could do that too. I mean, like I said, it's, it's um if that's the way we'd have to work it, because we, it depends where we're having some calibration issues too, as to where we may need to do some of the tests. So fall is high pressure.
Yep.
And spring is typically your main pressure.
Yes.
Okay. Well, if you are ready to pull the trigger, I mean, it's like I said, it's not a nine one one, but if, if it was signed up, we could work with you, Ron, to do it this fall, if you got the, if you're gonna do some stuff in the high pressure and spring, if we're gonna do something in the main pressure. So, so we can be flexible on the schedule.
Okay. That be useful if we wanted to uh, you know, one of the next items here is uh possible water main extensions for connecting contaminated private wells? That's something we need to run or would, would the old model be sufficient probably for doing this?
The old model's sufficient, Dawn. I mean, it is, but you know, this is just gonna give you a better, more robust, you know, finely tuned model. But I don't want you to think that the old model wouldn't serve you. It would.
Yeah, okay. All right. So like you said, it's not like an emergency, but it's something that we probably should be working towards.
Yes.
And if you think we got the funding uh for other engineering um items in the budget, then should, should fall into place. So you probably put something in front of us at a next uh September meeting or something?
Yeah.
Okay, the engineering service request.
You have one. Uh we gave it to you.
Yeah. I don't think it was.
It's number sixty four. It um, if you don't, we'll make sure you get it.
I got.
It was in the beginning. What? Yeah.
It'd be four, five pages.
Did you get the whole thing or just attachments? See, there's just two documents put together.
I didn't look at this one. It wasn't an email.
Yeah, I don't see it.
I emailed you and Amanda when I realized it wasn't in mine, just in case you didn't have it. So you guys should both have it in your email.
Okay.
Oh.
I, I got mine.
I got one here.
Okay.
So uh I guess this is in front of us. We could authorize this tonight then. So I guess this is in front of us. We could authorize this tonight, then. But that's the pleasure of the board.
Where would the the funds be coming from?
You guys want to just read it to me? Because I don't. I got nothing.
Yes. Do we? I mean, can we can this wait till September? Are you are you thinking of starting on this?
It can wait. It can wait till September, Dawn. That's fine with me. We just. Yeah.
You'll come on and share it, but it would.
Yeah, I'd like John to be able to have a take a look at it. This is the first time I'm seeing it too. So.
Yeah, no, like I said, it's, I mean, ideally be just give us enough time to do some fall flushing if you want to proceed with it, but it's it's not gonna, it's not going to be a problem to wait till next month.
Yeah, and that meeting is only coming up in like three weeks or something anyway.
Is that because time flies? Yeah, well, this one's a week late. So I get it. No, that'll work fine.
All right.
How many fire flows you think we're going to need to do?
Um, what did we budget for that? Let's see here. Well, what we budgeted was one day, and it usually takes two or three folks to do it. And you know, you can usually get half a dozen or more. So if we had two half days, we could probably get to, you know, a few in each zone. So three or three or four in the fall and three or four in the spring.
Yeah, I mean, so even if it doesn't coincide with with flushing, we can still let I'm not opposed to go out and do it. I mean, but it probably would help with the ISO surveys anyways to tell. I know those are going to be coming up and at some point. So. Yes, so we have to coincide with flushing, I guess, but.
All right, and they don't take long to set up. So you know, if you guys authorize this in September, we still really have October and November without any issues.
Yep.
All right, that's good. So yeah, if you want to put that in our package for September, I think September's meeting, then we can vote on it, then. And then maybe Ken have a chance to take a look at it too. So we're all here. All right. Any other questions for Keith on anything?
Yeah. Keith, last meeting, we talked about about adding Marcus of the timeline of the dates, I should say, when the vessels PFAS filtration vessels GSE vessels had been back flushed.
On the trend charts?
On the trend charts, exactly.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure we're not forgetting about that.
I will make sure the guys didn't forget about that. Have you started? I don't know if there's been any updates since that meeting has ever to the charts.
I couldn't claim I looked at it if they were. So but I just, you know, there's been a couple of things from the last meeting that I don't see. You know, the the final closure on right now. So I want to make sure that we we see that.
All right, I will add that. Well, if I may, I got a list running right here on my email, so I will make sure Billy gets that notice. He probably has it, but I will make sure he gets it again.
Okay.
And it was just just the back, just when they were back washed was what you asked for.
All right, because we have now back watched twice, I think, right at seven and eight. So the point was, we wanted to see those dates on the PFAS trend chart. So we see if there's any impact on it.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So I don't want to forget about that. I actually, I think we should have an action item on that. Amanda, if nobody has a problem with that.
Yeah, yeah.
I really don't want to forget about that.
It'll be easy to confirm, and then we can delete the action items. So, yes.
Okay, and then and then I think you guys presented the question about the easement forever source because of the project needs, but I think the deliverable was on our end to run it by legal because it was such an open.
And it did. We ran it through legal. They they were.
They had no issues with it?
No, no issues with it. It went off. So it's already executed. Yeah, we're not holding it up. So, yeah. And actually, I think they dropped the transformers already on site.
Okay.
I know it's on site.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
So I was just looking at the trend charts and it looks like all PFAS is passing the 50% of the first vessel at Wells 4 and 5. And here. OPFAST being removed in the upper half of vessel one, 75% port is removing more than 100% more than the 100% port. So I think I think we're having that rollover going on where it's bumping off some of those small chain compounds. I just kind of picked that up. Who puts these charts together?
We do. Billy Kitchens has been doing it here.
Okay. Maybe I don't know, I'm just thinking maybe at one of the next meetings, if someone, if we can just go through if there are highlights to to present here. And I don't know, maybe this is kind of a moot point for changing the media out anyway. So you know. But that's just something I picked up on. Yeah, I guess we could hold off on that, I guess, because if we're changing the media, it's probably kind of irrelevant, but.
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll make sure those trend charts get updated per your request there. But but just remember too, I mean, we are, we are pushing well, the first vessel, you know, beyond what I I suspect you guys will do going forward. So and that is to inform, you know, how the second vessel is impacted. So you know, that's why I think you're seeing some of the things you are too, because you know, future operations, you may be swapping out sooner. But at least now we know we will have data for both regards. So.
Right? Yeah. And just something else I'm looking at, it looks like PFBA has already broken through the 75% port in vessel one at well, seven and eight. So that's that's definitely the PFBA, yeah, which is expected. That's the first one that comes through usually. So it might be an effect of the backwashing, the intermediate backwashing that we had to do there. So just just pointing that out in case you're talking to Evoqua that put maybe maybe mention it to them so they're aware. You know, I know PFBA is not warranted, I don't think. But that might bode for the rest of the PFAS compounds too, you know, I don't know. All right. Yeah, that's all I had. And I don't know if anybody else has anything else, or we can move on. All right, sounds good.
Just to make sure, is there anything else for me on the agenda, or is moving on? You want, do you need me for anything else down the line?
Um. Do you think we want Keith to hear the potential water main extensions or?
If he has time to hang out.
That's the next item?
Uh, yeah, I believe it is.
All right, I'm hanging. And then and then and then I'll check out after that one. But so I'll stick around for that one.
All right, good. Yeah, if you can, that'd be good.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. So, yeah, the next item here is the an update on possible grant or grants from NHDES to extend water mains to private well areas affected by PFAS.
You guys see our screen? Are you asking us?
Yeah.
Yes, I can see your screen. I I'm sorry, your shared screen?
Yeah.
No, I can't.
It's a PowerPoint?
No.
You have to go to Zoom. The Zoom window?
Yeah, there's like a.
Go to your Zoom window, back to your Zoom window. Not that one, the one with the meeting. Yep. The one where we see Amanda, the other one. Go up into the right. Yep, that one. I guess double click Amanda, because it's minimized or expand just double click.
There you go.
See, it says share screen.
The green in the middle. And you can click.
Yeah. And then.
Now I can see it.
You can hit view slideshow. I think you'll you'll expand that a little bit more. Chris. All right.
So there was five areas that there were there were identified from the any Russo sent us information on. Area one is, you know, South Lucic Lake Road, Four Seasons area. The red dots indicate the affected homes.
Now, are those wells that tested above?
Yeah, they're all in exceed.
An MCL? Wow.
So when I looked at it, there's really, so there there is no limit on what you can apply for for loans for grants, I should say, but they're million and a half dollar grants. This just exceeds, there's just no way we can get to it and try to every different direction. It's even for footage wise, it's over 70 feet of water, water main total.
Yeah, and just for everybody to know, I think we had talked about one and a half million dollar grant would would buy approximately a mile of water main, 12 inch water main, right?
Yep. And I think where we use, so I use $340 a foot to be a little more conservative. I think at the time when we were having the meeting, we were using $300 a foot.
Oh, all right. So it might be a little bit less.
Yeah. And then just projected, just a projection. We don't know how it would come in or bit or anything. But so I threw this in there, just as additional funding possible down the road. Emergency Edutimes Fund, something else that we can put in for for this for this area in our I quote this correctly, 10 million, 10 million a year for five years, I believe, is what funding is.
And that's going to be federal money to the state?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
And who's that controlled by? Is that again, the drinking water? Trust fund or?
No, it's probably just DES, right?
Yes, but it.
It's the PFAS remediation loan fund specifically that would be funding this. It's they're the ones that have the loan grant program for PFAS. And that's a state program.
Okay. Would they still be within the additional funding coming out, the emergent contaminants fund, would they still be?
Potentially, yeah, potentially. But I think the million and a half you're getting from Amy is is the is the PFAS remediation loan fund.
Right.
Yeah.
The next one. So area two is the Great Stone. Tomahawk Great Stone. That falls right into, I mean, it's it's close. I mean, we can do great stone with tomahawks about 30, 300 feet. It's committed about 1.1, 2 million. If we add Pebble Court Old Road, which I'd like to do to tie in, see where the water main stops on Old Road, right? Pebble, obviously Pebble Court and Goldstone does not have water currently, so that would extend it to that area as well.
So help me understand why that is. So Great Stone and Tomahawk don't have public water right right now.
Correct.
But Windsor Drive has, which is just a
Yeah, you know, we Windsor Westminster, I we laid that main back in that timeframe. It was one of the first start work on.
Was this just a matter of the timing of the build of each development or?
No, I think that there must have been a need for it down there for some reason. I and I don't know exactly why we extended it, but we were bringing it up.
That would be at the request of the developer, right? Wants to get.
Those are all existing homes. So we put in there.
Oh.
So yeah, there wasn't a new construction. We put that in. So I there was could have been petition warrant or something.
Interesting.
So what? Yeah, one, one question I have on this is, you know, like that, say, the 1.59 option, it's a little over one and one and a half million by 9,000 bucks. But what happens if if we run over on this? That's we'd have to cover the difference, right?
We would. So my thought would be, apply for it the way it sits. See how it is, you know, see how the bidding goes, right? And we may be able to do it well. But if not, we scale it back and it might be so Pebble Court, Goldstone Court. That that per foot price was I mean, it's probably to be too inch. It could be scaled back enough that it probably wouldn't. It wouldn't be looked at the same as the Dr. Lion or whatever you for the pipe prices. So it's a lot cheaper for the two inch pipe. But we could scale it back. I guess my thought is you put in for what we're, you know, for what we're seeing there. If it comes in, I mean, it could be $350 a foot. I don't know. And we might have to scale it back, but but absolutely that yeah, anything over the one and a half, it would be on us.
Right? Could it be something where if we went in for the, you know, option A for the 1.12 million? We we cover those Great Stone and Tomahawk. And then, hey, we still got, you know, some money left. Then add the add some additional water line to those other, those two cul-de-sacs. And if we don't have money left, then we just, you know, I guess what I'm saying is that instead of having MBD in a position where let's say we got this grant, this bedrock that's everywhere, and all of a sudden, we're half a million dollars. You know, over that would be a significant hit. So maybe we want to go into the 1.5 million dollar grants, maybe a little bit under. And if we're ahead of the budget, then we can push the lines further on that money or I'm sure if we went back to DES and said, hey, you know, this costs less. Instead of taking the money back, maybe they can allow us to extend the main to if you don't have the answer, maybe that's something.
I don't have the answer on that, but I I want to say there my understanding was that there are million and a half grants. Dude. We can definitely ask Amy. I I've done 100% of that.
Right? Okay.
I just just to weigh in, one thought on that, Ron, is is I think in the initial meeting, we talked about too, you could talk about phasing things. So you could identify various phases on these extensions. So that gives you the room to do more if if the money's there, but then at the same time, not necessarily committing to something that you don't know that you have the money for. So.
I thought on that first meeting, though, the thing we could phase, but I thought it was a it was a whole project, though. It couldn't be like half of a project. So in other words, we couldn't just, you know, if we had just want to do Tomahawk, we couldn't do like Tomahawk and then do Great Stone after or something like that. I thought it had to be the one project.
I think that was in terms of what you were eligible for too, but but, you know, if you just showed that you had more room on that one project, even if so, it could be a supplemental phase, but maybe I misunderstood, but I thought you might have some flexibility there.
Yeah, you might. You might be right on that. So anyway, there's nine homes affected out there. And again, like I was thinking of decent affair. You know, Pebble Court and Great Stone could be cut out of it. You know, we don't tie into Old Road if that's the case, but that that's the product that we will be putting in for. And then, and then once the bids kit would come in, we would know where we if we could actually do that or not.
Right? So something else you might want to check with Amy that doesn't show up on these maps is if there are wells that have been tested that are below the MCL. Like, would there be green dots? So for example, I'm looking here at Pebble Court. If you look on the map, you don't see really any properties that front on Pebble Court. I know there's one on the corner there. But we could serve that off of Great Stone. Great Stone. And if there are no violations on Pebble Court. Then maybe we wouldn't want to spend the money to run the main there right now. If there were no non, you know. Non-compliant public, private wells, what I'm saying.
Right, right, there, so there wasn't any, since there was another whole map that you'd have gray dots on it, I didn't include that, but. Yeah, I mean, as long as it's a. A stub.
Yeah, I would definitely put a T in a stub, yeah.
Definitely, whether they don't, absolutely.
Right, right. And maybe that's something that if we're running over budget, we can pull back on something so that we don't get over budget. I'm just kind of concerned that, you know, because these are all, we're gonna be, we're gonna be showing the public a map that we're gonna try and cover for a price, but there's really that is at that point, there's no engineering done out here, so.
Right.
If we run into bedrock or massive utility issues that we didn't anticipate. Or just the cost of the unit cost is higher than we thought. It could leave us exposed to have to cover a lot more funding, you know?
So absolutely, so I probably one within the state was the the pricing is just to kind of give us an idea if it's if it. Qualified for the grant. And it would get us to the, you know, we can use these maps that I've already created for the pre-app. And then once we get those, you know, once we if we get accepted or what we get accepted for, then we move into the final. Applications. That's both engineering and and have some design work done and.
On that end. Okay, alright.
I. Yeah, depending if there's ledge out there or Keith. The three hundred, I I took that from Peter, actually, he gave me the three forty number. That's typically doesn't include ledger or anything like that, that's just a reconstruction and, you know, the the basic water main.
Yep, yep, I mean, it's a planning number, I've seen higher numbers used up to four hundred, I've seen lower number used around three hundred, but. You know, three fifty is not a bad planning number, you may get maybe more, maybe less, but. It was a day when we could install sixteen inch water main on Continental Boulevard for half that or less.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So any of those properties, property owners with. Red dot here, have have they been approached yet and do we know if they're even entertaining?
Some have been calling, so that was the other thing that, I mean, it's like a decision on their end. There is a grant programs out there for them as well, reimbursement for point of use service, point of use or whole house filters, they can get reimbursed up to to five thousand on that. Or they can go for the ten thousand dollar connection fees and it. You know, our entrance fees, STC charge in digging up the service to their home. As far as it stands now, they're going to go one or the other, they can't do both, true, and in in all real. Realistically, this is probably it would be a year and a half. Out anyways before you even. If, you know, to get the material.
Yeah, that's the other thing, you know.
So. Probably a lot of home, and they may they may wait for for, you know, a year and a half or so, you know, to get the the bigger reimbursement, but. Some may be doing the the point of use as well, so they have some coverage for that for that time, but.
I guess my point is, we almost need to have some kind of formal agreement with every property owner that's affected by this before we can even make a decision. Right, because we might apply for a grant and even break ground to put line in the ground and then realize that fifty percent of the folks in the area don't want to be connected to public water.
Run, main lines being run at all, grand, it's not gonna be cost to everything.
Right, but we might be neglecting another area that is more that has more people that are interested to to sign up for that. Mainline connection or for the, you know, public water connection, I'm just saying, I I wouldn't want to go in blind and assume that everybody that has a red dot on their property is gonna buy into public water. And it would be pretty, frankly, pretty embarrassing for us to just go ahead and spend all that money and the effort and then finding out that, you know, half of the folks don't even want it because they don't want to be on on just some restrictions possibly, right, so. So I think that needs to be part of the decision.
Do that.
Yeah, I how was, how have previous extensions been handled as far as commitments on who's gonna connect? I don't think we've even ever ever done that, have we?
No. Well, I mean, we did have a petition, the Bean Road extension was a petition warrant article. And then we're very slow coming in, basically, they wanted the fire protection in the area and.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I don't know if Amy Russo is probably got from DES, probably has data on all those red dots, I don't know if she. Has like a status of. Interacting with the property owners there and if she has like notes as to whether they would be amenable to connecting and, you know, taking out their ten thousand dollar grant portion to connect or not, I don't know. What her feeling is on that, if if she even collects that data or not, you know what I mean, but.
Find out, I know it was, we've been. Want to say, but we've got quite a few calls between Tomahawk, Great Stone.
Yeah.
Hall Mary Drive.
Okay.
Other primary ones, I I don't think anything that makes a road area. That I recall, but. About Seventh Bridge, you know.
Which which is kind of important too, I mean, if if people aren't calling and asking, first of all, they probably aren't even aware of it, but people who are aware of it, if they're asking for. I mean, I kind of seems to me, we want to maybe offer it to where people are asking for it. Unless, you know, we wouldn't want to run a mile of pipe for like two houses or something, but. Yeah, exactly.
Kind of my other point was, you know. One of my other thoughts is, you know, we apply for, well, that was a recommendation, again, we apply for everything but the area one. See how, you know, see what we get approved for, then we rank as to which ones we, you know.
Right? I even wonder, I mean, if we can reach out and send maybe letters to the ones with the red dots, we can cross check them with the address and say, or call or something and say. You know, we're looking at a grant to run a water main in front of your house, are you interested in connecting? Your well's been identified exceeding PFOA limit and. Would you connect if we ran a water line down and be kind of, you know, answering Wolf's question about how real is it that? Because it would it would be a little foolish to. Go through that million and a half dollars, even if it's a grant money that.
It's still money.
And then still no one wants to. I would think if people have been calling, though, that's a good sign that.
Yes, there's a lot, yeah, there's quite a few.
Alright.
And we certainly still do that as well.
Alright, you want to move on to the next stuff?
Me and Road, kind of, it's the same same view where it stops right. So Major Rose, the the full line from Amherst Road down to four mill. Boston Road. And Barbara's the backside, so that's kind of the same thing, I I mean, ultimately, I'd like to go to Amherst Road, but we put in for that grant and see how the the money, see how the the bids come in.
So we kind of loop it off there instead of.
Ending it, yeah. Go all the way to Amherst Road, hopefully.
Right? So in that map, oh, those are dots, just those aren't necessarily green indicating that well is.
So I did the same thing on this one, red dots, and I I'm just looking at it now from this distance that I'm looking at, there are hydrants that are red down on Amherst Road, so those are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, if the red dot has an exceedance.
Okay.
What are the blue dots for?
Yeah.
Blue dots, what what do?
Blue dots were, that is our elements, so when you click on that, it would come up with the.
Okay.
Property owner and and stuff like that.
Okay. So that really doesn't have any significance?
No, no, that was.
So that's eleven homes for approximately somewhere between one and a half to one point six million?
Yeah.
Alright.
This is. Wilson Hill and Vulcan Road, four homes. Twenty two hundred feet of pipe. It's just under a million.
And.
Yeah, this one probably would be more, only because I I have a feeling there's ledge out there, but.
Yeah.
Probably, yeah. For. So all those properties along those extensions that have not tested above the MCLs, they would still be given the option to.
Absolutely.
Connect as well, right? And that could affect.
Why? Good, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I don't think ten thousand dollar grant, they'd be eligible.
No, they wouldn't be eligible for that, they'd have their own extension.
Yeah, correct, so that might be a deterrent.
Yeah, but some might because it adds, you know, some value as well, right? So we almost need to factor that into into the equation, right? How many people might be adding to the budget?
Yeah.
By signing up.
It would probably be good if everybody was away connected because.
And some might not.
Be getting more revenue for really no expenditure put in the line, you know, which is a good thing for us to have. The other question I was wondering too is, there may be a lot of properties that don't have the red dots, they haven't tested their well yet either.
I I, correct, so we just did a small kind of extension on Tomahawk for somebody that ran their pump went bet dry. So when we were able to, they, you know, stay made for, we did two lengths of pipe and it kind of, the neighbors, how much do I have to my house?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I let I let him know about the the grants and and all of that and. It never been tested, and he's he was right next door to one of something that didn't have an exceed, so I.
Yeah, because I think that's automatic, if it's within, what, five hundred feet or something, you can you can get a free test if someone has a film. Not exceeded exceedance or something, I think.
Amy a call and, right, try to get it, get your well tested to get on that list to get, you know, if 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 there's an exceedance or not, so.
Right?
You would almost think that we need to team up with DES and once we know what run we propose of that line. Then DS almost, you would think has a moral, if not legal obligation to reach out to those property owners, abutting that proposed run, right?
Yeah, good idea.
And 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 making them aware of the need or, you know. That it just makes sense to get their wells tested and see if they can either participate in that grant or take advantage of that grant or at least be proactive about it.
I know that they can send out letters to anybody that was in that certain radius of when the test had been tested, because we actually got one.
Right, but you, and and I I heard about that too, but. You almost want to think that this should be happening along the run of the of the.
Yeah, because this would be a little more like concrete.
Right, right.
We're thinking of running a line down here, and why don't you test your water and see if if you're, yeah, if you fail, you know. You exceed the MCLs, there's a water line right in front, and now you're eligible for a ten thousand grant to connect to it.
Right. So we almost need to find out if it would be overstepping our authority to reach out to those property owners. On the one hand, we have to be careful probably because we don't want to ring the big alarm bell, right? Because we are gagged a little bit with the four and five settlement agreement, right? So we can't be alarmists.
That is anything.
Outside, outside of the GMB, so I don't think we. Uh, with that, I I.
We've been gagged for less.
Yeah. I mean, I'm certainly, I could talk, maybe we have a, you know, if, depending how the the grants were awarded in neighborhood meeting or something or, you know, something in that area, just know what what's out there, so I can definitely. Probably, and then they probably find out for as well, so.
It's a win-win, right, for everybody, even those folks that may not are subject to that grant, right, they they might still be teetering on the edge of the MCL and and the more people that buy into it, the more value we get out of it in the end, right, so.
So as far as notify notifying the town that these potential grants exist. I don't think there's any active, well, I saw on Channel twenty, there's like a banner that's rolling about that, but like, I don't know.
A mailing to every single homeowner that had an exceedance.
DES did?
Yeah, that's how they started getting costs.
So I'm wondering, like, is somebody, like, so those are people who already knew to test their well?
They either submitted results or DES tested.
Right, so who would know?
Then you said the people in the immediate proximity got notifications as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know this is talking to homeowners, so she could keep a spreadsheet. People that are like, yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, that would be good to know, if if, you know, people call in and say, hey, what's going on, you're gonna run a water line, my well is, you know, contaminated, I want to hook up to your system. Be good to keep a record of who those are, that'll help us kind of figure out. Okay.
Yeah.
Didn't I hear about some kind of DS town hall meeting coming up soon, somebody mentioned something.
But I'm not aware.
There was one already that happened in July. There was another one in. The Litchfield or Londonderry, like August fourth, beginning of August, it it was playing on Channel twenty, that's why I noticed. And I wasn't aware of that, but it, there was one before that that was for Meramec. This more recent one, beginning of August, was for either Londonderry or Litchfield or something. But I don't know that there's anything else for Meramec that I'm aware of, maybe there is, I'm just not aware, I don't know.
I mean, we can take on the role of DS of notifying notifying all those property owners, right, but certainly, I think those that are along the lines and vicinity of the runs that we're proposing, I think we should be trying to see that we can be proactive about those.
Be nice for the town to send out. In the tax bills, just a notice to say, if you have a private well, you might want to consider looking into DES to test your well and, you know, there there may be opportunities for treatment or hooking up to MBD depending on one way or the other or something, but I don't know that the town is thinking of doing anything like that, but. Like, I know to our customers, we send out something with our bills once in a while, but you know, these people aren't our customers, so if they have private wells.
So it is.
Yeah, if the town's doing anything proactive to notify. And probably Nancy Murphy would be spearheading something like that, she'd probably be aware of that. Alright, so. Where do you think we go from here?
So I, I mean, I'd like to, again.
What's that?
Maybe we'll get the.
One more area, Hall Mary, this one, we we, I mean, we can get a lot of phone calls on there, they definitely would like it in that, you know, water extended. Their neighborhood, so. Six homes. Approximately sixteen hundred feet, this could be ledgy area as well. But. Yeah. Last, it's some areas where the water main went in, but.
Oh, really? Okay. Yeah, I'm I'm up for that, I mean, if those those four areas that you're thinking about. I don't know, but I used to think area one is just too.
It's just too expensive.
Yeah.
And the grants are, you know, one and a half million each, no limit on how many you can apply for. It only bill for water main extension on the side of the GMB. My recommendation, you apply for two to five. Grant, see what, see where they come in. At that point, if if, you know, anything less than, you know, to to be get approved for two, that would rank, which ones, you know. Would we want to put the water?
Yeah.
But. But. Like to put in for them all, I can, but again, I can utilize the map as you talk, maybe what I already created here should be suffice for the pre apps. And then uh. Final lapse, then. That's what you would need some some design work done on that, so.
Okay. Anybody uh have any other questions or what's your thought about moving forward on this? I'm pretty much in agreement with with going for it. I mean, it's um it's important and it's grant money's available now. It's hit it well, it's there.
I just feel like we're. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, so I just wanted to make sure these are small enough numbers that we're not talking about supply issues. I mean, every every month we're talking about that we don't have enough supply for what we got, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, what is it? Probably less than a hundred houses altogether, what you just mentioned in all of these.
Yeah, but I'm potentially.
True, of people on the way. Yeah, that's right. People along the line. Well, I think uh. We're also making decisions hopefully soon about more source capacity too, so. I think we're aware of of that and uh.
It's time, right?
Yes, yeah, it's time. So ho- hopefully uh we can keep those together, you know, as more houses come online, more source can come online as well. Okay, and again, we may not get all five, uh, four grants. We may only get one or two, you know, you never know, so.
I guess my my problem is a little bit, we're we're throwing a little bit, in my opinion, darts at the wall, right? Because we really don't know. How many of those properties and other properties along that run that we're proposing might be. Jumping on that bandwagon, right? And and I'm a little worried about that because, again, we might get a grant for a run, right, an extension that the property owners aren't interested in. And we might get denied for one that property owners are interested in. And then we look pretty foolish and we, you know, we didn't prepare that well, so.
Well. I I can follow up with Amy as well. My thought would be, like, like, again, I I believe the million and a half, they're only a million and a half grants. I don't, so I think if you're accepted. We might be able to switch them around.
Shuffle it to other areas.
Exactly.
Okay. That would help.
So I guess it's like a chicken or egg thing is, do you want to call all the people, find out if they're interested first?
Right.
Or you want to get the grant first and then. Call only those people for that location.
And that may be part of the criteria that we use to say.
Which one we exactly proceed with, yeah.
And and I recognize what you're saying, but I also don't want to just throw darts at them, right? So I I, there must be a middle way, right, that we have found yet, so. So it might be a matter of discussing that with Amy.
And 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 if we apply, it doesn't mean we have to accept the grants either, just.
Sure, it just being, you know.
Place holder for now.
Receiving the one might be, you know, eliminating us from receiving it from another area. That's, I'm just worried about that. If we can shuffle it over to another area. Then we don't have that problem. I'm just worried that we're applying for four, right? We get granted on two of those, right? Uh, you know, we we get the nod on two of those, but those two aren't ending up being the ones that people really want to go for it. And then we just cut short the other areas, right, and.
So what I was gonna, I mean, obviously, this this costs on there for us to see, but I can actually take the cost right off. It's really not. These are the, these are the areas we're looking to to put water main in um or or apply for the grant, but there's really no. No cost on the on the paperwork. I'd probably really find that out, but.
Problems.
The estimates, so it is.
I think the key question is, like you said, can we shuffle that those grants around to other areas if in Eric?
Right, yeah.
If that's if that's possible, then we don't have a problem.
Yeah, but you can't use, like, if you're three hundred thousand dollars short on this grant, you can't apply that three hundred to another one. No, that's the only thing, but. You if you're saying if we apply for four and they say you're good for two.
Right.
We can pick which two. That's what I'd like to do.
Correct, right. Because we should. Those two after we have some serious buy-in from the property owners.
Right, right.
There almost needs to be some kind of like, you almost want to think about some kind of down payment, right? That gets reimbursed later because it doesn't help us anything if the property owners are changing their minds down the road. And then we just spend a million and a half for water line and the one one is used. So there has to be some meat in the game with the property owners. And maybe I'm thinking too complicated, but I just, I'm just really, really worried. We're spending a million and a half or two million dollars for water line and then we're. Sitting there.
Yeah, but you know, at some point, if you have a contaminated private well.
I I think it's.
At some point.
Yeah, but don't don't underestimate, some people don't want.
Oh, I know.
Want to be part of public water because of the water area.
Anything.
That and the worry, you know, the lawn irrigation thing. Not everybody wants to be in public water.
This isn't um. I don't think there was a. I mean, and you didn't mention any part of the grant saying that they had to decommission their wells either.
Right.
So I know with this, like, the San Cobain funding, um, when the, there is, if they want them decommissioned. You can keep your well, so any anything that they're paying for in in the G M T area. If you want to keep it well, you can. If you want it, you know, say, I've done with it.
Fill it in.
They'll they'll pay to have it decommissioned as well, so.
And they're paid to separate too, if there's a free irrigation.
Yes.
Um, what do you think the timing is on uh?
I thought I started applying for tomorrow, as soon as tomorrow, so I know.
Yeah.
People are, people are putting in now, so like, I want to get in.
Yeah, I don't want to go in when all the money is all.
Exactly.
Right up. Keith, you still with us? Do you have any thoughts on any of this? I don't know if we lost him.
Sorry, I was muted. I just said, no, I'm listening, listening, and I don't have anything to add to what Ron's saying, so. I was just looking to see what the deadline is for the uh. PFAS remediation submissions, but I think they're rolling, so it doesn't matter.
I'm just gonna say, I don't think there was a deadline. I mean, we could apply in at any point, but I.
Yeah.
The money to run out, but.
Right.
I mean, you gotta think Bedford, London Dairy, Litchfield, all of them must be the same. Situation, maybe even more so with more private wells and Litchfield and everything than than they have, so.
And Ron's right. I was at a meeting at DES a couple of weeks ago and they are spending that grant real fast. And so it's a limited. Pool, so sooner the better.
Yeah.
Do we need a vote?
I got one more. Can I get one more reassurance on the supply thing? Uh, I didn't, I got an answer that we're gonna get more source, but. We feel like we have enough supply to handle their max days in the summertime with the additions.
Keith, what do you think of that?
I think you do. I think you do. I made a note here and to follow up with Ron too on where we are with the Penechuk connection, but. Um, you know, our, you know, you are. You have it. You don't have a lot of it, but we have to follow up with the Penechuk wholesale arrangement.
Okay. That's true.
Okay.
Technical advisor over how to get out that.
To sit escape or if you scroll down with your.
Right, fine, here, it's just not up on the screen.
Probably. I don't have it anymore.
Yeah, just close sharing.
You don't have it anymore?
Nope.
It's close powerfully.
I never had it. I was just going by what you guys said.
Okay.
All right, so while we figure this out. Uh, the next item here is the um. Order commissioners to review the minutes from July eighteen twenty twenty two regular meeting. In the public hearing in non-public session.
And this, are you guys all set with me? Don, sorry, I just wanted to check.
Yeah, I think so. Um, let me just, uh, let me go down to action items just to make sure there's nothing specific. Or Underwood on those. Not sure that there are.
I looked at him with Jill last week, so I think we're. There's some upcoming things, but I think we're current. And if it's.
Oh, I was gonna say, there's one thing about uh reviewing a S D C calculation metrics to include escalation due to irrigation. In a work session, corrosion control and chemical feed, remote chlorination stations. Says on here to be discussed in um.
September, yeah, I saw that one, so.
That's something we want to try to um schedule now or um.
Sure.
And it's here on the um. Listed in September as a target date.
Um, September, what days do you like? And I know you like late afternoons.
Right.
What are you talking about?
These two items on the uh. S D C calculation metrics and uh.
Like a work session or?
Yeah.
Worth, we're Wednesday, late afternoon's okay?
What date?
Yeah, I'm away from the uh the week of the nineteenth.
So we could do the thirteenth or the twenty seventh. That's those, sorry, those are Tuesdays or the fourteenth of the twenty eighth. Tuesday or Wednesday night. Are open for me, so the thirteenth to fourteenth or the twenty seventh or the twenty eighth.
Thirteenth is uh primary, NMSA state primary, we shouldn't be holding a meeting there.
Yeah, either one of those all work for me, so whatever you guys.
Um, and actually, looking at the fourteenth, I do, sorry, I do have a conflict. So the twenty seventh of the twenty eighth, they're both open for me anytime after three.
Yeah, I'm free.
Twenty seven.
Twenty eighth, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. September twenty eight.
Yeah.
We can do that remote, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Because it's not a meeting.
Works on vacation that that week, but I will. No, that's fine. I can zoom in.
Oh. All right. What, what, what time? I don't know what works for you guys.
Or third, I mean, if it's a if it's a Zoom work session, I could do it at any point during the day. It's an off rotation, so.
Four thirty would be good, yeah.
All right, I'll.
We can do four too, but.
Four o'clock.
Yeah.
I'll pencil in four o'clock, you guys. Yeah, or later, so I'll just.
Just money.
Four thirty.
Sure, four thirty, four thirty works better for me if you can do that.
All right, I blocked out the twenty eighth, four thirty to six thirty for now.
Let's do four to six. I don't want to hold everybody up, so that works better.
Four to six.
On the twenty eighth?
Twenty eighth, September.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, Dawn, I wanted to make sure, sorry, Dawn, I wanted to make sure that you had on the action items. The next steps for the cost for the wholesale arrangement. If it's not on there, we should put that on there with Penechuk.
And that's for.
Establishing a whole, establishing that short term wholesale arrangement with Penechuk.
Yeah, you want to talk about that for when?
I just want to make sure it's on your action items. I think we had already talked about it. I think we had agreed on a three year. Two hundred and fifty thousand minimum take. At, you know, with a guarantee of half a million gallons a day, and this goes towards John's question too, but. I think we need to take, we need to move on that.
Yeah, I don't see it on the action items, but can we do that in the next?
At least I was bringing up their budget season sessions, we can work that in.
You think we should be moving on that sooner than later, though, Keith?
I think you should. I I I understand. I think you guys are interested and understand that we need to do it until we get the other supplies on board. That's why we were going to do a short term arrangement. But I think we want to start the process with them to draft and craft the agreement because I think it's going to take time. To have it all in place before it's available to use. We want to make sure we're ready to to pull the trigger on that come your next heavy use season.
Right? I mean.
Because I think to John's point, you'll be fine in the winter, you know, because you're not irrigating, but come come spring, we should be have have this secured. And and we don't want to lose our spot with Penechuk.
Yeah.
Like a pretty small amount to make making a decision on. It seems like a pretty easy to me. I don't know. There's any reason not to go forward, but I thought we decided to go.
I I thought you did, or at least we're leaning towards it at minimum.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about, I don't think we actually officially. Voted or decided to move forward on it, but. Um, but this kind of ties in with the source evaluation addendum that you guys were still. Doing for us, right?
Yeah.
Wasn't it part of that? We're gonna kind of, we're gonna kind of look at the overall and compare. Where that falls with the rest of the source evaluation um options?
Well, didn't we do some of that at our July meeting? We presented, so, and that was where our recommendation came out was to stay the course with the uh with the cost to service study. With with the wholesale arrangement. I mean, we can.
I thought there was still another deliverable that was coming though, that we didn't discuss yet, though, didn't we?
You got it. You got the the report update um and and we can talk about it again at the. At the work session if you'd like, but.
Why not remember? I remember we did talk about it, but I thought there was still something else that needed to be added to it or something.
I believe you would ask to, Keith, to look at the, since we have the Penechuk numbers, to revisit the um. Like basically revisit the, you know, the costs on that, that study, I believe. Stop here.
Well, one of the points was that Penechuk water is not filtered for PFAS.
I know.
Right, so it is below the MCLs, but it is not on the same level as Merrimack will.
No, it's not, and we'd be committed to that.
I think we had said at the time that we want to. Did we talk about? Whether we can run that through one of the filtration plants or something? No, I know we can, yeah.
So the problem is if if we view, if we pursue any other source, new source option. It's not going to be online for.
Years.
Three years.
Yes, and that was, that that's right.
Yeah. And maybe so the. The Penechuk uh wholesale agreement for a three year wholesale agreement would get us, would bridge us over. To that point. But that would mean we'd be having to buy. Water from Penechuk for the next three years that has PFOA in the high single digits. Which is. Not as good as our water that's basically non-detect PFOA. And that's PFOA is the one with the health advisory. That's that's the issue and everything, so. But again, it's it's, I don't know what other options we have.
Short term, near term option, and I think if, you know, if you lost a well today, you'd be going there.
Right, right, right. And we'd be paying retail.
You'd be paying retail.
After October, we'd be paying retail rate. So I want to avoid that.
I mean, there there'd be a blend there. I mean, whatever they're putting out, obviously, it's gonna be. Because of all of our water is being treated by that point.
Yeah.
And. The Penechuk, this would still come through the booster station on Amos, right?
Right.
Uh, I'm, yeah.
Continental.
Oh, continental, right, right.
Well, for road.
Yeah.
And um. Between that boost station and our holding tank. Is anybody connected to that line?
Oh, yeah.
Directly, there is, right?
Yeah.
So, okay. So there's some customers that would get pretty straight up Penechuk water. Until it's tank early.
Well, not not if not if well seven or eight are running, you're blending.
That's true. That's true.
We can.
Where do they meet?
Let me look at the valve situation there. I think I can, I can stop it from coming out now to cook. I think I can pump that right onto the continental, so that we have an instant blend.
So we should, we should talk about that because if it's really always going to be a mixture of seven and eight and or anything that comes down from the tank.
Yes.
Then we really have almost no problem, right?
Yeah, that's gonna cut it down to real low.
Right.
Yeah.
I I'm concerned about, is there any, is there any users that are gonna be basically on the line that comes from the from the Penechuk connection, right, from that boost station? Up toward. Up towards any other node that meets any other supply. And that branch would be undiluted Penachuk water. Not that it's. Bad, but it's. It's not as good, as far as PFAS concentration goes, right?
It is, it is what the entire town of Nashville is drinking. That doesn't mean our customers are happy with.
Right, we got a trend likely, right, so.
Kind of a moot point if it's our only option.
Well, but I just think we need to understand it because people are going to ask about it, so we need to understand it. So I would like to hear about that.
We have a policy on, you know, we only run, I mean, it would be a waste not to use it, but it would be a. A max day source that, you know, we only run it when we're having troubles and other than that, we don't use it.
Well, we'd be paying for it even though we didn't.
That's, that's only.
Right.
I, I think if we can guarantee that, that it's basically blended from, from, from the point of entry into our system, then I'm not too worried about it. But we need to understand that.
Now, I mean, I, I know you spilled, right, I, I don't believe that changed, but let me, I need to just.
So it's important for us to also pick a new source option ASAP as well, because we need to make sure that that's in place. Three years after the wholesale agreement is gone, you know?
And, and it is in your capital plan, so that's what, and, and that's maybe where I'm getting confused, Dawn, we maybe didn't. Present the, the water supply update, but we did present the capital plan, and that is in there. So you have these new source supplies in your capital plan based on that. So I think we do owe you a summary of the report, but your capital plan is reflective of what's in the report.
Right. I thought I remember an ESR, ESR that you were going to provide an addendum to the. To the source alternatives evaluation.
Yeah, and we did do it, we did do it, we just haven't, it's done, the work's done, ESR was authorized. And we owe, we owe you just a presentation on it.
Right. Okay. And then I think after that, we gotta, we gotta pull the trigger on one of them.
Ron, do we need an action item for that valve scenario, or is that just going to some, be something that you're going to report?
Blending.
I really would like to know that.
Alright. So, alright, so I think we're good with you, Keith.
Yeah, can we do the, can, do you want to do a presentation on the water supply update at that same work session, or is that going to be too much?
We, um, actually, I'm looking at numbers, the very last item on the action items is Underwood to present an addendum to the source alternative cost analysis. For the July meeting.
Okay.
If we did that and just didn't take it off the list, or if, if that, we might add questions to have it. I thought we had more to do on that one.
Yeah, I, okay.
Is that too much to try to put on September twenty eighth? I mean, to me, it seems like it's probably more important than the other two items we're going to talk about on September twenty eighth.
Let's, it's a work session, let's put them all three on there and we'll start them in priority, and if we.
Yeah.
You know, we get to them, we get to them, if not, at least we've accomplished what we could.
Yeah, maybe we start with that one, because I think, in my opinion, that's probably more a priority than the other two.
Okay.
John's going to keep us in line.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Please do.
Alright, well, I put it in my calendar for those three items.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay.
We'll see you then, or, or on the twenty second on our next meeting.
Sounds good. Alright, enjoy the rest of your night.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith. Thanks, guys.
Alright, good, so, um. Back up to the, um. The minutes, let's start with the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting. Anybody have anything to offer on those? I had, uh. Yeah, a couple, uh, one thing, let's see here. Page five of eleven. Uh, line twenty-six. Uh, let's see, it says separated and color-coded by plow zone and. After and, can we put a list of streets? By salt use. So, so just basically delete coordinating lists that have. So those four words, coordinating lists that have. Delete those and just put a list of streets by. So it should read separated and color-coded by plow zone and a list of streets by salt use. And then continuing on, on that, um, line. Uh, as the comma, and then it says, but the change, and then I want to add in there the following. Made to the salt application rates. Between salt use areas.
Say that again?
Yeah. Um, so it says, it reads here, it says, but the change, then I wanted to say, I wanted to add. Made to the salt application rates. Between salt use areas. Is manual. Because the way it reads out, it just says the change is manual, and I, I think people are going to ask about what change we're talking about. So this is say, uh, but the change made to the salt application rates between salt use areas is manual. Alright. I just had a question somewhere. Oh, yeah, and there's a couple places here, um, line forty-five at the end of that line, instead of DPW. If it's, just to be clear, because everywhere else has said PWD, Public Works Department. So on, on page five. But I think it's PWD, right? Public Works Department.
We always call them, but I think they did change it.
I thought it said PWD in other places here, but. And then there's another one on line fourteen on page six, but. I, it's not a big deal, I guess. That's all I had on those. Yeah, you want to make a motion to approve those as amended, sure.
So moved.
Motion by Wolf. But you're second. John, you want to make a second on those, will you hear on those? Yeah, I think, I think Paul was absent.
Paul was absent, yeah.
I can second.
Okay.
Can't find the mute button, but I can second it.
Alright, motion by Wolf to approve, second by John, all's in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, aye. Alright, and for the record, John. I, oh, aye, okay, so that's three zero one with, um, Paul abstaining. Okay. Uh, the next minutes we have are the, um. The July eighteenth public hearing minutes. Anybody have any corrections on those? I don't either.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Motion approved by Wolf. I'll have those in front of me, it was.
Uh, Paul was absent, so John, you're up.
Second.
Okay, second by John, all is in favor, uh, to approve the public hearing minutes of July eighteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Paul, you saying, okay, that's three zero one with Paul abstaining on those. And then the last thing we have here are minutes from the non-public meeting on July eighteenth. Um, so if I can hear a motion to approve those.
Move it.
Moved by John, second by Wolf, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. And abstention, Paul's abstaining on that, so that's three zero one. Okay, so all of our minutes are approved. And, uh, moving on, uh, we're in the action items list. So, page down to that. Uh, okay, so item number two, that's information's coming in October. Um, the pair PFAS, item number twenty-three. Distribution sample, system samples, I think that was in this packet for this meeting. So, um, so Amanda, why don't you update, um, number twenty-three for the next one to be due. At November. Quarterly, this happening, I think, yeah. Okay, uh, number forty, open house, I think that's table till spring. Forty-three, ongoing salt mitigation committee meetings, that there was one, um, last month, right, July?
Yes.
So I don't know when that one is going to be reoccurring. We'll probably talk to Jamie about that. Number forty-six, an event policy. That's kind of sitting with Kerry right now, right?
Waiting for Kerry to come back.
We set back to, I, I apologize.
Sure.
We want to do something again in September. We want to keep in the, as far as salt meanings, a couple.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind, I don't know, um. Availability-wise, if we want to.
Yeah, that's true.
If, if you want to make a note to, um, talk to Jamie and see if, um, when the next one he might be available for, because he's kind of a key player to have, so. Why don't you follow up with him and see, and then we can see if we can set something either September, October, whatever. Alright, so forty-six, we'll, we'll keep that table. Uh, Kerry was anticipating coming back in. September, right, okay. Uh, and then we already, uh, we scheduled, uh, number forty-seven and forty-nine for September twenty-eighth. Um, number fifty-two, Brandon Kern, and to, uh, we're going to ask him to present results of the PFPA sampling. Um, I think really the outstanding thing on that is that the discrepancy. Between Eurofins and the EPA lab.
Well, there's an email in there.
Right.
Additional items that explains about the PFPA, it's really no standard, there's no testing method that's.
Approved, right. Right. So I know, uh, there were a couple questions on the recipients of that, Mindy Messmer was one, and then, um. Yeah, Brian Getz from, where is he, Portsmouth or something, Dover, Portsmouth or something? And I don't, I don't know that. DES has a clear answer on that, I know, um. Um, the lady who sent out the results mentioned that there's different testing methods and things like that, so she tried to preclude that. Answer, like question with an answer, but. He still had questions, but. I don't know if that's something that, does the board feel like we wanted to have, um, I think we talked about having. Brandon present the results, but I don't know that he. Wants to do that, or maybe he can do that remotely if we still want him to. I'm not really sure. What we want to do about that. It's, it's a compound that was detected originally, and then it was, uh, by Eurofins when it was sampled, and then when it was. The same samples were sent to, uh, or split samples were sent to the EPA lab, and they came out non-detect on everything, so. Kind of get like two completely different results, two different labs. John, does that perplex you in any way?
How different were they? What was the first one that actually hit something?
They were, uh, you know, like in the single digits or something, and then the next, the EPA lab came out all non-detect.
Single parts per trillion?
Yes.
I mean, I guess it wouldn't completely surprise me, it's a sample, right, so it's two hundred and fifty milliliters of water that's in the ground. And, yeah, things can happen, the extraction, the test is not easy. So. Could be a timing thing too, could be a weather thing, depending on what's going on with the water table and that sort of thing, so things can fluctuate a little bit, not a lot, but a little bit.
Yeah.
And though there were split samples taken at the same time?
Yeah, that.
Oh, two split, split samples, okay.
Yeah.
That's different than, yeah, no, something weird. So I would do it again, if they're going to do again, what is this? This is some new compound or something?
Yeah, it's a, it's a new PFAS unregulated, um, something that the twenty-five standard PFAS samples don't test for. Um, EPA through DES approached us and said, hey, we can have a, we have a grant to. Sample for, what is it, eighty panel or something, eighty compounds or something, and. Uh, we said, yeah, let's do it, and this PFPA came up twice initially. But then in the second sampling, we split samples between Eurofins and EPA lab. Eurofins numbers came up a little bit less than their previous sample results, but.
I mean, what, what is the purpose? Yeah, what is the purpose of us kind of going down this road? This is just to stay kind of initially exploring something? Is this a short chain? Or a long chain?
It is a three-chain compound, yeah, and it actually broke through our.
So I mean, we already know we got short-chain compounds coming through, right?
Yeah.
Passed it in the long chain, so it seems to be more of the same issue with a different name.
This is just kind of revealing that there are short chains that are, that are, we could be exposed to. That we're just not testing for in the twenty-five panel that we usually test for.
And it's good to see that the DES is, is looking into this sort of thing, knowing what we know about how PFAS users and PFAS manufacturers change formulas from time to time. Um, so I'm glad to hear that they're looking at it. Be great if they do something about it, but I don't know what we can do about it.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know, it, you know, I don't know if it's necessary to have Brandon come and discuss this with us or anything. If you can, I mean, I, we can reach out to Brandon and just ask him to join in at one of our next meetings and zoom in, maybe see if he's willing to. Explain anything to us. Um, you want to, you want to give him a call and ask him about that?
You know, a formal declaration would, I think, be more important than a attendance at a meeting, to be honest. Uh, we need guidance, right? What are they planning to do with that information?
Yeah. I don't mind giving him a call if you want me to. I haven't, I know him, I haven't talked to him in a little while, I mean, I can ask him. Say, hey, what, you know, what are you going to do with this?
Or maybe, maybe a joint conference call between the two, you know?
Sure. Why don't, why don't you reach out to him, I know you've contacted him before, and, um. See if, uh, if he's planning on doing anything with this information, what he thinks about the difference, the, the big difference in the results. If he's got anything substantial to discuss with us. And if not, we'll just take it off the list and forget about it, but for now, you know?
Sure he has an opinion on.
What it means, yeah, that all mean. Alright, that'd be good, appreciate that. Okay, so, uh, where were we here? I lost my track here. I have fifty-five, I think we were putting that off for December in the budget season. As in the footnote there, uh, fifty-six. What are we doing here? Discuss metrics for permitting based on peak consumption rather than average consumption. Oh, yeah, we already did fifty-six, fifty-seven, we're going to try to cover that in the September work session. Uh, number fifty-eight. Reach out to Jamie for updating the general graphs. Wouldn't. That, that wasn't in, um, that wasn't provided in August in this meeting, right, so. Um, I don't know when the last one was. Maybe just follow up, see if he can have that ready, if, if, if it was due this month, if he can have it ready maybe for next month, or. Obviously, I don't want to take away from any work that he's doing on well nine, you know? Uh, alright, so fifty-nine, evaluation of proactive measures to track and correlate customer water quality complaints, discoloration, sediment, chlorine. Uh, any follow-up on that? I'm not sure who's looking into that. Are, are we keeping a database of these complaints or something? If we just receive any?
Well, you guys had said you keep. No, 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 but it's.
It's in a log or something. Can then, can those be summarized on?
Look at notes and. I'm gonna look at notes and flag that as water quality.
But okay.
One thing we had talked about is to see if we can like map the complaints, right, so we can look for focal points, right? Concentration points, right? And I have no problem adding that as a comment, maybe we just put that off until, you know, after the budget season, right, or or something.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, obviously, there's other priorities, right, so if we don't have time, that's obvious that we can't get it done now, uh, but it's a good reason to stay on the list and. I don't know if we want to just leave it there, or um.
Okay, we met, yeah.
Okay. Alright, yeah, let's just leave it there. Uh, number sixty, did uh, any fallback from Lou Niles, I thought you had discussed with him.
I did, I did originally, I haven't called him back since to see if I could get any documentation, he said it is NSF approved. I just.
Right, want some kind of confirmation of that, yeah.
Yeah, and I, as we get closer to. Do some of the material tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
It sparks a whole.
Yep. You know, NSF sixty-one has a website, and it's a very long database, and it should be on there, it's approved. Yeah, let's mention that tool. Um, okay, and the last one, number sixty-one, uh, I think we're all saying that, yeah, that work session. Alright, good, um, so next item is uh old business. Everybody have any old business to um discuss? None, move on to new business. Anybody have new business?
Just a quick heads up, I will probably not be able to attend the October meeting in person. Because I'm traveling out of the country for work, so I can possibly dial in.
Like two in the morning.
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be late. It's the seventeenth, yeah.
Right. I should be here first. Yeah, I, I don't, I'm planning on being present. Okay, any other uh? New business? Um, the one thing I noticed, um, I got my MVD bill in the mail this week, and I looked on there, and um. It, I thought, I saw in the previous bill that it actually breaks down what the charge is for the basic charge up to the three thousand cubic feet. Per month, whatever it is.
Quarter.
Per quarter. And then um, it has a different rate for above that, but the numbers I, I thought I remember seeing previous to this latest bill. Like how much the costs were for each of those, but in this bill, it just had one price, it didn't have the separation of the cost. For the three thousand cubic feet, and then the additional cost at a higher rate.
They may have been there, we changed.
Something changed.
It will change. If we will be upgraded.
No, that's when when Eddie was doing it, she's, she broke it out, so I'm not sure why yours.
I could have brought a coffee with me to show you, I can, I can.
Come live, I do.
We will find you.
It wasn't cheap, I'll tell you that.
They always find me when I forget to pay my bill.
But no, that led me to look at saying, wow, where is Mexico's coming from, and I couldn't, I have to pull it out later, I was like, but whatever. So um, and I thought I remember seeing it before, so something changed, that's why I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, because Eddie showed it to me. Okay, she was breaking it out, check into it.
Okay. Um, and I know uh, we had a um, uh, that previous um. Person that was on the line had um. Asked us to talk about the EPA's health advisory about the four parts per quadrillion and all that. So, you know, I, everybody's aware of it, EPA came out with health advisory of point zero zero four parts per trillion. Which is actually four parts per quadrillion, it can't even be measured that low. Um, I'm not aware that EPA is planning to set an MCL that low. I still think they're forthcoming with an MCL, but I don't think it's gonna be, I don't think they're gonna set an MCL below what can be measured. Um, but obviously, I think our goal here is to have non-detectable PFOA in at least our own source water. And I know if we have to buy water from Penachuk, that is gonna be detectable PFOA, because that's what they're serving, it's it's, it's definitely compliant.
Right.
It's below the twelve MCL in New Hampshire, but I think one of the latest numbers in here, I saw one of them was like nine point seven or something, so. You know, it it's closer to the MCL than it is to non-detect, right, but um, you know, I I think. There's really nothing we can do in the interim where, look, I think all the new sources that we're proposing to bring on. If they need treatment, we would expect them to have, be non-detectable PFOAs.
Mitchell Woods, right now, that is non-detect.
Right.
And we have the capacity, so if we choose to do artificial recharge, we have the capacity to handle that.
Right, because that would still be going through the vessels at wells four and five, so. And we are changing out the um, uh, media in the lead vessel at wells four and five now. And currently, PFOA is not breaking through into the finished water. And um, we just gotta make sure we can get that media replaced, so what will become the lag vessel. Before PFOA breaks through what will be the lead vessel. I follow that. So I, I don't know if anybody has anything more to offer on that, but I, I think, you know, that's kind of what the plan is, right?
It's a fair statement to say, so if they do lower the standard. We should be okay, it may trigger a sooner change up, that's.
Exactly, I was about to say the same thing, we should be prepared for lower levels, uh, we just have to.
Right.
Recognize the cost.
I've heard like whisper numbers in different organizations, like, you know, even as low as like four or seven or something like that, so. But we don't even know when EPA is really gonna put it out, so. Obviously, if they put something out lower than twelve, then we're gonna have to follow, the state's gonna have to follow and all that stuff.
On a positive note, if that happens, it helps us with the breakthrough of the short chains, right?
To change out the media.
Right, because the frequency goes up, right, so.
Yeah, exactly.
And, yeah, and if they added, you know, those that, that. Bottoms the initial, I think the short change was not in the initial agreement, so.
I don't see that happening.
But, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think EPA is only looking at PFOA and PFOS. PFBS, but not PFBA, unfortunately. Okay, um, that's all I had for new business, and if anybody else has anything else, we'll move on, superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things, um, just a, I just want to mention that we did lose the pump motor at well four for, through a lightning strike. Uh, um, it's already replaced, it's back in, we were able to find one in Texas, we're down for two weeks.
Is any of that um recoverable from insurance?
We're gonna, we're gonna look into it, it may be.
Yeah, I I have clients in Massachusetts that got hit recently, and they're getting a couple of well pumps replaced and.
It actually.
Or something, I don't know what our deductible is or anything like that, but.
I'm not sure, it actually damaged a card as well, uh.
Oh, yeah?
For the.
The FD or something?
Yeah, I'm gonna go with, uh, then let's, on the scale to end.
Okay.
For controls. But we actually get extra cards. With the, with the plant, so that's part of what we asked for was some spares.
Oh, nice.
So we actually, we had that on hand, we didn't have to order it, so we actually tried to, ordered that now to replace it, so.
Standby, um, standby, but yeah, we were able to locate, they had it right, Texas, so they just, it's shipping up here, so. Okay.
That's actually, just pop some on my, do we have spares for the VFDs? Because they fail actually quite frequently.
We are, actually, we're waiting on a VFD. Uh, for seventh, well, that's been on order for a while.
So we, so we do have spares?
Yeah.
Now, do you realize that they need to be powered up once a year?
Well, they alternate, the, the seven, they alternate, power down, they have it powered back up, so. There's one VFD for, for pump one, there's one for pump two, and they all, the pumps alternate on startup and. Two didn't come back up, so we're, that's been on order for a while.
But we have no VFD spare sitting on the shelf disconnected, okay. I need to.
If we can, I, we'd almost have a specific for each.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, that's part of the problem, is they're, if they're not exactly the same pump, it's not gonna be the same VFD, although.
It's seven and eight, we probably could do a, do a spare, because they, they're both the same.
But but even, even keeping them as a spare is not easy, they have to power it up once a year, otherwise the uh capacitors die.
Really, huh?
Yeah.
Actually, I wanna say it's the finished water pump, VFD, it's not the well.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
But that, that's why it alternates.
We should, we should maybe talk about that, maybe during, maybe not during the meeting, but during one of the work sessions, because that, I see that a little bit as a risk, because if they have like ten months lead time. Then we have lightning strike, and we take out two VFDs for one well, right, for each border.
Yeah, do we, do we? Maybe do a soft start on, yeah, to, just to.
Actually, that might be a question for, for.
See, I've looked into it, I thought there was a way you could run that with, so we talked about doing a soft start. As one of the wells, on, as a backup to the VFD, something went down and you could fire it up, and I thought I read on, you didn't need a soft start, you could actually. Um. Do with the VFD as well, bypass around, but I.
You should be, yeah. But, but maybe that's an action item, like a risk analysis.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Make that an action item, so we don't forget, and um, we can have Underwood. Follow up with their electrical engineer that they use to size up all of our VFDs that we have. And then what's involved with powering up a standby VFD, you know, how easy is that, maybe make sure that that's done if we have spare VFDs. Yeah, so Amanda, um, what are we on, number sixty-two or whatever the next action item is?
Yep.
That would just be um.
A risk analysis, maybe, right?
Yeah, just inquire about um. Feasibility or having a spare VFD, spare VFDs in our pump stations.
Or means to bypass a default.
Something, right?
Yeah.
Means to bypass the defective VFD. Thank you.
Alright.
Next, what I just, uh, CIP discussion scheduled with the planning board was switched from September to October fourth.
Oh, I, I forgot to mention something too, the um. The salt use policy and procedure was supposed to be on the agenda for the town council on.
This Thursday, uh, last Thursday, yes. Twenty-second, September twenty-sixth.
Number twenty-second, I'm actually gonna be on vacation at the Cape that week.
I did shoot Kyle an email, I haven't heard anything back yet, to see if that's something that is uh, be rescheduled to a different.
They have an earlier meet, do they meet twice a month?
They do, they meet, well, at least it's shared on the calendar, I, I'm assuming they do.
Yeah.
Probably with the eighth or something, it's.
I didn't know if they could push that up, or.
So I asked that, and I, I think I may have been asked if there was a Zoom capability too, but I.
Yeah, alright, that, I appreciate that.
If I didn't, I will ask that, I think that might have been an afterthought, but.
And um, Jamie wasn't planning on going to the last one, I didn't know if he had a conflict, but maybe, because he might want to go to, to the next one?
Did I?
Whenever it's rescheduled.
I emailed the board, I think, did I include him as well? I think I did.
Uh, yeah, that it wasn't, uh, I don't remember.
They rescheduled it, but I will let, definitely let Jamie know that maybe he could make this one.
Right, yeah, so soon as you hear anything from um, Paul, you uh, asked about the um, oh Kyle?
Kyle.
When it's on the agenda, yeah, let me know.
I'm gonna.
He's copied.
He's copied.
Jamie's copied.
I know he was, obviously was involved in it as well, so I wondered. Actually, Kyle, and I gotta talk to Kyle anyways, he had asked if any of us would be interested in giving my hand plowing this year. I've offered, I've offered in the past that for, to help about if typically during emergencies, if they're short-handed, then you know, they. They need somebody that, you know, we all have CDLs, or most of us have CDLs that we could step in if needed, but I. Obviously, I don't, I used to do it, but um.
That'd be using our equipment or their equipment?
I, I need to get the details, I'm assuming it's gonna be theirs, that they're gonna be short staffed, there's.
Piece of equipment.
Yeah, they should have the equipment available, that's what I'm assuming, but.
Okay.
Have to be very, very careful with labor reporting. We have to be very, very clear on that, yeah.
They may not be interested either, so.
So would they be paying our employee for that, or how to?
Completely separate from obviously.
Yeah.
Right, we just have to make sure that nobody's getting paid on our time while they're doing that work at the same time, right, double-tipping, yeah, so, not that I would, I don't want to, you know.
Insinuate.
Insinuate that that's what's happening, but that's the first question people are gonna ask.
They want like an offer to the guys that they want a side job.
Yeah, it's like a spare job or something.
Obviously, district stuff comes first, if there's a break or something, you're gonna need to pull off and. That's what I was just saying, it was time we did contract to the town, but the actual district contract, so.
No, I think that's a good gesture, though, if some of the staff wants to help out like that, yeah. Good, that's good. Alright, anything else?
That's all we have.
Okay, uh, now it's questions from the uh press and public, I don't know if anybody else is still on the um. Nobody else on the um. Trying to say participant list. Alright, uh, next meeting is uh September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. And with that, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Paul, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Paul, aye, John, great, four zero zero, thanks, Merrimack TV, as always.
Yeah, thanks, guys, have a good night.
Thank you.